Yeah, unit five is cognition. Unit four is learning. Unit four learning, we'll say learning, we're talking about classical conditioning, Pavlovian conditioning, observational learning, things like that. That's what we're talking about there. Whereas cognition, it is memory, thinking, problem solving, language. Those areas as well as the, I think, testing intelligence is also in unit five as well. So that's part of the college board's reorganization plan. So, all right, Ken, just a quick check, can you see the screen? The Fiveable, start off with, do I go twice a week? Well, I don't, the Q and As are once a week and the CRAMs are once a week. It just so happens they're on the same day. So there is also, I don't think I have it on here, the, I believe there's a trivia, I think tomorrow evening as well. So that's, but I know that's on a Fiveable website somewhere. So, so I don't, the CRAMs, like I said, once a week, the Q and As once a week. And again, just happens to be the same day for me, for psych. So, questions? This is an open Q and A pertaining to either unit four, again, which is the learning unit, or unit five, which is the cognition unit. And if we run out of questions, or the mood kind of suggests we'll go on to some practice FRQs, which at this case, this time I'm taking from the practice units that are actually available through Fiveable. So we can discuss those. So I have the question box open for any questions. If you want to use the chat, you can do that, do that if you want to as well. So with that, the time is yours. What things might you want to know about sensation, I'm sorry, sensation, the learning unit, Pavlov, Skinner, Bandura, cognition, problem solving, memory? What topic within unit four, I mean, in unit five, we'd most likely be tested, that's a, that's a, it's anyone's guess. Because it would not, you know, there's, there's not really an answer to that. We'll find out obviously in May when they give the exam. I would say though, what are some of those difficult ones that might come up that will trip up people? For example, the difference between classical, or I should say, between condition stimulus, condition response, positive reinforcement, negative reinforcement, positive punishment, negative punishment. When it comes to memory, those things that trip up people a lot would be proactive interference, retroactive interference, retrograde amnesia, anterograde amnesia. Those common terms that people often get mixed up are often easy, an easy selection for an FRQ. Now, the big wild card about this year's AP exam is that it is a take home AP exam, which still to this day, that phrase just makes me chuckle a bit, the fact that it's a take home AP exam. And so it's not going to be as easy as to look it up and get the definition and you'll be able to answer it. I think that the level of analysis is going to be a step higher. So it's not just going to say, it's not just going to say, what is negative reinforcement? Well, obviously, they, they don't usually ask those questions anymore anyway. But they might give you some scenario and say, now describe how negative reinforcement would affect or could be used and could affect whatever. So that's, you know, that, that's the best thing, way I could answer that because it's a, it's a huge up in the air thing. So, so the different types of memory. All right, well, so I would have to, here I am kind of going for my memory here because textbooks can kind of give you these charts about different types of memory and they get very, very specific. Some get very, some are general and some get very specific. So we'll start off with the difference between an explicit memory and an implicit memory. So the one way of looking at the two is that an explicit memory is something that can occur through the, through a request to remember. So for, in other words, for you to remember it or for you to recall it, there's usually something that kind of, something environmental that kind of brings it out. What do I mean by that? If I said, think about your favorite birthday. Well, that favorite birthday, you are going back in your memory to kind of get out there. There's kind of a, a process that you're aware of, a process that you are, you know that's going on. It's like, okay, my fifth birthday. So, yeah. Or if I said, who was the 15th president of the United States? You know, assuming you know your, your presidents, okay, I'm going to think about that. It's an explicit process because it kind of comes about with a request to remember. There's a, a kind of a process that you know that you are doing. Now, the implicit memory, on the other hand, is something that is beneath your awareness and it comes without an explicit request to remember. In other words, for you to kind of go and tie your shoes, you don't like to tie your shoes as an implicit memory. I mean, now in your, this era, time of your life, I mean, when you were first learning it, that's one thing. But when you're doing it now, you kind of just do it without even thinking about it. It's so automatic, you can kind of just go and tie your shoes and hold on conversation or attend to something else. It's something that does not take a laborious, deliberate process for you to go get that memory out. And that's why it's an implicit memory. So procedural memories are considered to be a, an implicit memory because it's just something that is almost automatic. Conditioning is considered to be an implicit memory. Technically, priming is sometimes considered to be a, an implicit memory. Well, that gets, that gets a little complicated. So follow up question here is, yeah, so explicit memories do recall, do involve more conscious recollection of things. Explicit memories tend to go through more of the hippocampus, whereas implicit memories tend to be more through the cerebellum. That's why procedural memories are considered to be implicit memories. That's why conditioning is considered to be an implicit memory. Because it's more through the cerebellum, more so through the cerebellum. The, so explicit is memory of things like facts, memory as of things like, things that happened in your life. That gets into different types of sub-memory, we'll get to in a moment. Whereas the implicit memories are, I would say on the AP exam, they're almost always referring to procedural memories, although technically it could get into things like conditioning. So, okay. Now, when you get from there, you break it down. So the implicit memories, you have your procedural memories, now remember of how, memory of how to do things. My computer here hopefully, I won't appear to be as dark of a shadow here. So, so knowledge of facts would be, okay, your semantic memory and the other type being episodic memory. I'm looking at this, I guess you have a question here, is that, isn't that the same as episodic memory? Is what the same as episodic memory? I just want to make sure that we're getting that. Yeah, so I mean, let's put it this way, episodic memory is a type of explicit memory and semantic is a type of explicit memory. Implicit memories would be going through, for our purposes, we'll say that goes to the cerebellum, whereas explicit memories tend to go through the hippocampus. That is kind of a very large oversimplification, but for our purposes, that, that tends to work in AP site. So, so when we talk about those explicit memories, two types would be your episodic memories, memories of things that happened in your past. Think about a great time, or think about an enjoyable time at an amusement park. Tell me about what you did last summer. What was the, how was New Year's Day for you? Those are things that have happened in the past, or I should say, things that happened to you in the past. Whereas a semantic memory, now if you remember semantic encoding, semantic encoding means remembering stuff based upon meaning. Semantics in language refers to the meaning of information or the, the meaning of sentences, the meaning of an idea. So semantic memory is a memory of facts, is a memory of, you know, who was the 15th president of the United States? What is the capital of Mississippi? How many miles is it between New York and Los Angeles? All of those would be more factual, semantically based memories. So then you have other types of memories that sometimes fall on this chart, but again, I, I kind of like to think of it more as memorizing each one on its own. So you have prospective memory, which appeared on the, I want to say like 2012 maybe FRQ, prospective memory, things of, memory of things in the future. So what do you have to do in the future? What's, you know, prospect kind of means like the potential for things in the future. So prospective memory, you know, so what are you going to do when, I don't know what you're, it's like in your situation, if your, if your government's, state says you have to isolate or whatever, but when this, this whole thing is over, what are you going to do? Well, you know, the first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to go out to the movies and then I'm going to buy ice cream and then I'm going to, but that's memory of things that you have to do in the future. Retrospective memory, retro is that prefix meaning like old or in the past, retrospective memory, things that have happened in the past. And you might say, well, wait a minute, isn't that the same as an episodic memory? For our purposes, kind of, they're just different terms that kind of are defined in different ways. So, okay, you know, retrospective memory, where were you when you heard the news about, I don't know, the 2016 election? Were you up and awake watching it? Did you hear about the next day? Something like that is a retrospective memory. So those are a bulk of them that I can, you know, of different types of memory. So, you know, if you have a follow up question on that, please do, you know, please follow up with that in some way. So, is it best to write scenario based examples for our FRQ responses? So if you're talking about like the practice FRQs, every scenario, so just as a general FRQ question, if you're, if you're writing about, on something on the FRQ, you should always relate it to the scenario that's being given. Now, if they don't give you a scenario, and I doubt that they won't, I think they will give you a scenario, you know, then maybe you can make something up there. But I would say stick to whatever they give you. I think that's the best way of going about that, stick to whatever they give you. So, uh, see, talk about the differences between reinforcers and punishments and the negative types. Okay. So what I want to do, of course, this is a little difficult when you don't have the visuals here, again, because you don't plan really ahead of time here. I'm looking at the, so here's what I'm going to do. I'm actually going to, all right. I'm actually going to post this link here in the chat. So I will answer that question if you go to this link, it'll be very helpful. So, all right. Why is perspective a type of memory if it's about the future? Because it's a, it's a more of a memory about things that you might have to do or things that will have to happen in the future. I mean, technically they'd say, okay, you know, when sunset tonight? Well, sunset's going to be at 7:42. Well, even then, it's still prospective memory because you're thinking about something that's happening in the future technically, although usually it refers to what, your own personal life. So it's, you know, because prospective, it's about the future, it's about what's going to happen. A prospect for, you know, this person's a great, we have a prospect for the net baseball team, that means that someone who has the potential in the future to do something well, that's why it's called prospective or uses that word prospect. So if you go to that study guide, which is on the Fiveable website, the difference between reinforcers and punishments. Okay. So this is where we have, you know, let's break it down bit by bit and then we put it together. So first off, a reinforcer is something that will increase the chance of the behavior happening again. In other words, it's a stimulus that when, after doing a behavior, it's given, or I should say, no, let me take that back. After a behavior, a reinforcer increases the behavior, the chance the behavior happened again. I'll say that again. Given a behavior, when a reinforcer occurs, it increases the chance of that behavior happening again. So reinforcers make something happen more often. Punishment makes something happen less often. Now, if I said, what are something, you know, out of to do chores? You know, you do a chore, what can someone do to make you do those chores more often? And you might say, well, you know, give me an ice cream sundae, or you know what, take away all my chores for tomorrow, or something like that. That's because that's reinforcing the behavior because it's going to make you do that behavior more often. Punishment, on the other hand, makes you do it less often, you know, decreases the chance of you doing it again. So, you know, if you speak out of turn and, and your, you know, teacher says, all right, you know what, prom's canceled, the prom is canceled and, you know, that's a pretty harsh punishment, but maybe that will make you speak out of turn less often. You might debate that, but you get the idea. Or, you know, you get detention or some salient, you know, something that will kind of make you say, you know, I'm not going to do that again. So, so understand that, the difference between a reinforcer and a punishment. So if it's going to ask you to talk about punishment or reinforcement, if it gives you punishment or reinforcement, if it says reinforcement, says, okay, you know what, they're talking about something to make the behavior happen more often. If it's punishment, they're talking about something to make you do the behavior less often. And there's, that's a distinction, that's a definite distinction between the two. So, okay, given that, let's put that aside for a moment. Now we get to the positive and negative types. This is a very important thing and I drill this with my students throughout the year, really. Positive and punishment do not mean good and bad in this case. Positive and punishment do not refer to good and bad. You know, maybe if, I don't know if Skinner came up with the terms positive and negative here. I think if he knew that this is what was going to happen and confused students, I think he probably would come up with something different. So this is what, if you're concerned about this, drill this, practice this, give, you know, give yourself flashcards, do whatever it is you need to do to practice this idea. Because when we talk about positive, again, forget about reinforcement and punishment, let's put that off the side for a moment here, let's start with positive and negative. If it's positive, you're talking about something appearing, something being presented, something being given. When it's positive, it's there, it presents itself, it's given, it manifests, it falls from the sky. Positive, it's there. It's kind of like if a drug test comes back positive, it means that there, there was the presence of drugs. If the, God forbid, a coronavirus test comes back positive, it means that they found the virus, the virus was there. Negative, on the other hand, is the absence of things. Negative is the, something is taken away, something disappears, something goes away, something vanishes. And so what happens there is, given that, the difference between positive and negative, positive means something is given or something appears, something is presented, negative, something goes away, something disappears, something vanishes, something gets reduced. So given that, and by the way, you know, positive things and negative things could be good or bad. That's why I want to make sure you know that it doesn't have to be good or bad. Because yes, a coronavirus, a positive coronavirus would be bad, but you know what, if a couple is trying to have a child and they have a positive pregnancy test, that's good too. Negative, you know, you know, you'll say a person takes a drug test and comes back negative, great. And if they are tested for the coronavirus and they tested that negative, great. But maybe let's say you want, you know, the test for the antibodies, you know, go on, you know, if you have the antibodies, so maybe you have immunity later on, and it turns out you're negative for the antibodies, well, that's not good. So, you know, it could be good or bad. And yes, this will, presentation will be available online within an hour or two after this is done. So, yeah. So, so understand that, the difference between a positive and a negative. And let me just talk about some other types of things where not positive and negative appear. Not so much for the AP exam, we'll talk about positive and negative hallucinations. A positive hallucination means I'm seeing something that's not there and a negative hallucination means I failed to see something that's not there. Here I have this bottle. If I'm having a negative hallucination, it means that even though it's right in front of me, I can't see it or I don't perceive it at least. That's what I mean by a negative hallucination. Whereas a positive hallucination, let's just say I see a bottle right in front of me right now, there isn't one right in front of me, but I see one, that's a positive hallucination and it doesn't make it good or bad. Okay, so the more you get that down, the difference between positive and negative, the better. So now let's look at the different possibilities here. What would be a positive reinforcement? Well, first off, we see the word pause, that means something is being given and reinforcement means it makes the behavior happen more often. Something is being given to make the behavior happen more often. So you clean your room and I give you 20 bucks, that should make you make your, clean your room more often. Positive reinforcement, ice cream sundae, positive reinforcement. Okay, what about a positive punishment? Okay, so positive means something was presented and it makes you do it less often. So you talked out of turn and I gave you a shock of 20 volts, you know, that's a positive punishment. Spanking, corporal punishment would be positive punishment. So you say, how can spanking be positive punishment? Because positive doesn't mean good, positive means something's being presented, given. Okay, now let's talk about negative reinforcement. Okay, negative reinforcement, which often gets confused with punishment because that word negative being misunderstood. Negative reinforcement, okay, here something's being taken away that will make me do the behavior more often. A phone being taken away would not, would not be a negative reinforcement. It would still not be a negative reinforcement. That is not a negative reinforcement because, you know, if I get bad grades, let's put it this way, if I'm trying to, so taking away curfew is not a negative reinforcement. Because taking away curfew and taking away, well, I'm sorry, I take it back, yes, you are correct, I take that back, you're taking away the curfew. I, let me correct myself, I'm sorry. Taking away the curfew would be a negative reinforcement. I apologize for that, I was getting my phone, speaking of phone, my house phone, which never rings, just started to ring, which was confusing me. Taking away curfew would be negative reinforcement. Here's why. So, you know, you have this really terrible curfew, it's like you have to be home by six o'clock in the afternoon. Wow, yeah, I apologize, that, that's my fault. So, gosh, I hate this terrible curfew. You got really good grades and just turned, I go see your report card, you got straight A's. You know what? I'm taking away your curfew this weekend. Wow, I have taken away the curfew. Will that make you want to study more in the future because that terrible thing was taken away, that curfew? The answer is yes. That is a negative reinforcement. Another typical example is if I have a headache, I take an aspirin, the headache goes away, headache goes away. That again is a negative reinforcement because the next time I have a headache, I'm more likely to take aspirin. Take this, I'm really apologize, I apologize profusely for confusing you. Yeah, so taking away curfew would be negative reinforcement. You know, a teacher who cancels a test the next week because you were all so well behaved, negative reinforcement. Now, what about the negative punishment? Negative, okay, something's being taken away that makes you do it less often because you got bad grades, you got an F on your report card, I take away your cell phone. What's the chance you're going to get an F again the next time? Well, it'll probably go down. So what happens here is the negative reinforcement, or sorry, negative punishment, negative punishment, I'm taking away the phone to make you get, get Fs happen less often. That's what makes that a negative punishment. So it's a two step process here. This is what I teach students, it's a two step process. First, ask yourself what, you know, is something being given or taken away? That's the first thing you have to ask, okay? If it's being given, you, you know, that's makes it positive, if it's being taken away, it's negative. Then, okay, it doesn't make the behavior more often or less often? More often makes it reinforcement, less often makes it punishment. Is that the law of effect? Well, that's, law of effect was E.L. Thorndyke's idea that came before Skinner. So Skinner kind of takes Thorndyke's ideas a little further. Law of effect is basically this. A, and I'm going to avoid using positive and negative, if a behavior has a favorable outcome, the behavior is strengthened. If the behavior has a unfavorable outcome, the behavior is weakened. But you see, and you know, you might say, well, that's very similar to what I just said, but the, the difference here is that Skinner takes a step further, okay, favorable outcome, well, what, what makes it favorable? Like how did it become favorable? Because something was given or something was taken away? An unfavorable outcome, well, what made it an unfavorable outcome? Because something was given or something was taken away? So that's the, that's the distinction there. The law of effect was a very basic idea that Thorndyke had suggested with his puzzle box and his cats. And Skinner kind of makes it a little bit more specific. So that's the difference between the two. I mean, they're very similar, it's just that Skinner takes a step further and gets very, very specific there. So, you know, if you see those practice questions on oper, or I'm sorry, on positive reinforcement, negative reinforcement, do that two step process. You'll find, it gets, it's much easier that way to kind of look at it. All right. Premat principle, I'll push till later because I don't think it's a terribly important thing for the AP exam, but hey, I've been wrong before. Difference between functional fixedness and a mental set. So a mental set in general is a set way, I don't want to parrot the term, it is a kind of a rigid way of, and I'll get back to that, okay, I'll get back on in just a second. So, so a mental set is when approaching a problem, it's a, it's a way of, that you know to solve a problem. And usually the mental set, some textbooks just define it as a general thing, other textbooks kind of present as a, as a not good thing. But a mental set is a fixed way of trying to solve a problem. It is, you know, I, I see a problem, you know, I can only approach it in one particular way, I can't think outside the box, I can't look at a different way of approaching the problem. So it's, mental set kind of applies to just general, like, you know, approaching a, a problem in general. So, okay. Functional fixedness is a kind of specific type of mental set. With functional fixedness, it's the inability to see new ways of using a process. It's like, you know, it's like, you know, here I have this bottle and I forgot my gavel. I wish I had a gavel, I wish I could, because I don't know, I want to gavel, pretend like I'm on People's Core or something like that, or I'm on Judge Judy, I want to, I want a bag of gavel, but I don't have a gavel. So, so you know, okay, you know what, what I'm going to do here is, I don't know what to do. Well, you know what, hopefully I may have figured out, hey, you know what, I would, I would want to take this gavel, or I'm sorry, this bottle, you know, I could use it like that. I've taken the gavel and, or taken the, this bottle and turned it into a gavel. That's overcoming functional fixedness, but if I can't notice, or if I can't figure out, or I can't realize I could use this bottle also as a gavel, I am functionally fixed in that case. So that's, that's what I mean by a, that's, that's what I mean in this case of a overcoming functional fixedness and functional fixedness being a specific type of mental set. You know, another, a more general example of a mental set, I ask you to solve a math problem on the SAT and you know, you're so used to trying to solve it algebraically and all you can think about is solving it algebraically, 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 when in fact you could have just done the guessing check or the guessing test, you know, just plug in the numbers and see which one works, but you're so set on trying to do it algebraically, you can't think of novel ways of solving the problem. So that's the difference between the two. All right. So still some confusion about the phone being taken away. Okay. The confusion here, the confusion, see, you have to go back and ask yourself, okay, what's the behavior that is in question here? What's the behavior in question? So, let me ask the chat here, why would a phone be taken away? Why would a phone be taken away? Yeah, wouldn't, yeah, so, so in this case, let's say it's bad grades, okay? I'm taking away your phone because of your bad grades. So we'll start with the behavior, bad grades. Now you've lost your phone, okay? Was something being given, or was something being taken away? Let's start with this, is it, you know, something being given, or something being taken away with this consequence? Bad grades, is something being given or taken away? Taken away, so does it make it positive or negative? It makes it negative because something's being taken away. Now, because I've taken away your phone. What will happen to the bad grades behavior? What will happen to the behavior of getting bad grades? Will it make you get bad grades more often in the future, or less often in the future? Less often, okay? So, does that make it a punishment or a reinforcement? If it's making it happen less often? It indeed makes it a punishment, okay? Because the taking away of the phone, taking away makes it negative. It makes it a punishment because it makes the bad grade behavior happen less often. Now, let's say, next marking period, you get straight A's. All right, you know what you got straight A's, I'm giving you your phone back. Now that I've given your phone back. What's happening there? Well. Positive reinforcement, and what, yeah, it's a positive reinforcement, and what's it a positive reinforcement of? So you get your phone back, it's a positive of getting good grades. So this case, getting the phone back is a positive reinforcement of getting good grades. Losing your phone is a negative punishment of getting bad grades. The confusion sometimes what happens here is, you know, you have, sometimes you're not thinking about the behavior that's being reinforced or punished. That's why. That's why some people get confused by that, that's why some people get really, really confused with that, so. So is that, that clarifies, if you're still not sure, please let me know. Because again, it's something that I. Yeah, so the question, it always comes down to, what's the, what's the behavior in question that's being, that's being addressed here? What's, you know, what behavior is facing the favorable or unfavorable consequence? That's the key there. Because if it gives you a scenario, you know, Sally singing a song, and she's out of tune, and as a result, you know. Her friends give her a really mean look, okay? What is that? It's probably gonna be a positive punishment in that case, because the mean look, something's being presented, and it makes you sing badly, less. Less often, or sing out of tune less often. So, yes, by losing the phone, the initial behavior, the behavior in question was the bad grades. That's correct, that's correct, the, the. The bad behavior, or the question behavior, so. Yeah, so, yeah, because taking it away would mean a decrease in bad grades, make it a negative punishment, that's correct. That's correct, okay, yeah. It takes practice, and I literally, with my students in school, I think we, we spent a whole day on, like, a whole period on that. Because it's something they have to get down, so hopefully that makes it, that clarifies it a bit, so. All right, you're no problem, again, practice it, practice it, practice it. I'm gonna go down to, all this is real quickly, short-term versus working memory. For our purpose, originally in the original Atkinson-Shiffrin model, published in the late 60s. The short-term memory was, okay, how much can you hold in a short time, and you know, about 30 seconds? Like, all that you can kind of process all at once, seven plus or minus two items. Working memory is kind of what they call it now. Because what we realize is that it's not just storing stuff, it's not just like holding stuff. It's also kind of processing things, calculating things, answering things. It goes into the working memory, goes in the long-term memory, it looks at the senses, the sensory information. And it's kind of putting all that together, so it's not just units of information that the original Atkinson-Shiffrin model has. Now we kind of look at it more as a working memory, that it's not just holding stuff, it's also working with stuff. That's the distinction between the two. If that was, if the question was to distinguish those two, that, now that answers it, I hope. If there's more to it, please elaborate, so. All right, so. So is applied behavior analysis modern-day conditioning? I'm gonna ask for clarification on that, please, because I want. It would be helpful if you could give me a clarification on that question, so. I think I actually, I actually managed as answered, but, but please follow up on that question, because I'm not sure exactly what you're asking there, so. All right, can I explain higher-order conditioning? Okay. Higher-order conditioning. Is a, it's conditioning built on previous conditioning. What do I mean by that? So, does anyone here work a job where they get a paycheck? In the chat, is that when you're good, do they get a literal paycheck? Okay, so Sasha gets a paycheck. So if you don't get one, let's just pretend for a moment that you're at a job, and you get a paycheck, and an actual piece of paper. Well, you know, clearly, when you get really excited by getting that paycheck. It's not like, oh my gosh, you know, you weren't naturally born to get excited with a paycheck. If I gave you a paycheck, like an actual check worth a million dollars, it's a valid check. I give it to my three-month-old son, he won't care. So at least, I mean, I'll just kind of maybe take it with his hands and throw it on the floor, or something like that. Or maybe he'll put it in his mouth and drool all over it, it means nothing to him. Clearly, you have learned that, that has value, but was that paycheck actually paired with a naturally. Reinforcing or a natural stimulus that makes you excited? In other words, you know, it was obviously not, it wasn't like you sat, someone sat you down one time and gave you food. And as the unconditional stimulus, and then gave you a paycheck as the condition stimulus. You know, it wasn't an original pairing. Where do you think that paycheck, that paycheck must have been paired with something else? What do you think that, you know, what do you think that paycheck might have been paired with? That makes you become excited when you get a paycheck? What might have that paycheck been associated with, been connected to? Well, it is, well, I wouldn't go secondary. And I wouldn't say food either, because if it was paired with food directly, that would be, you know, that would be its first order. But here, it's, it wouldn't, well, let's put it this way. What does the paycheck mean? The paycheck is equal to what? You can go shopping, but you can't spend the paycheck shopping. Like, you can't, obviously could sign it over, I suppose, but you can't just like hand a paycheck to the cashier with money, right? It's paired with money. So that paycheck was probably once paired with money, a whole, you know, stack full of bills, I hope it's, you know. Yeah, lots of money there, I suppose, and that made you excited. Well, guess what, you weren't born to be excited to that, were you? That was conditioned, now let's suppose, let's take a discussion, that the money was paired with food. Or was paired with some originally, naturally unconditional stimulus. You know, you know, you know, some food or something like that, something that was naturally reinforcing. So the money was the original condition stimulus, the money, you were conditioned to become excited to money, right? Well, the paycheck was a later thing. The paycheck was paired with the money, but the money was already a condition stimulus. So the paycheck was, was paired with something that was already conditioned. That's what makes it higher order. Higher-order conditioning means that I am becoming conditioned. Based on something that's already been conditioned, based on something that's not unconditional. Based on something that's not a natural thing that will cause me to do something. Or to feel something, or react in a certain way. So, what happens here is that, hi, so let's say I have, money is paired with food. I wouldn't go with money, I wouldn't go with, I wouldn't go there just yet. I, I wouldn't quite do that, let me get to secondary in just a moment. So, what, what it's called is, let's say the money was paired with food a long time ago, when I was a baby, or when I was a little kid, and so I became conditioned. They call that first-order conditioning. Then, the money was paired with a paycheck. The paycheck became conditioned, they call that second-order conditioning. And let's just say Friday, every Friday was payday. Friday got paired with a paycheck, that was conditioned on previous conditioning, that's third-order conditioning. So they actually go in numbers for, or in these ordinal numbers, first, second, third order conditioning. The difference between primary and secondary reinforcer is something different. Although it does share a lot of similarities to what we're talking about. A primary reinforcer is any unconditional stimulus for our purposes. Food, we'll say, water, we'll stay, we'll stay with that. You know, basically, any type of unconditional stimulus is a primary reinforcer. A secondary reinforcer is anything that is conditioned. In terms of the higher-order conditioning stuff, yes, I would say it's kind of like a chain. When it comes to primary versus secondary reinforcer, I would simply say that a primary reinforcer is something that naturally reinforces. Because you've been naturally conditioned, or naturally born, naturally have the predisposition to react to it. It's like, okay, you know what, you go, and food is the perfect example, it's like, all right, you know what, you go and do your chores, I'll give you a Twix bar. If you like Twix, if not Kit Kat, and if not too bad. But, you know, so you, you know, you're like, okay, food's great. But, secondary reinforcer, it's reinforcing because it is something that you have learned that's reinforcing. You know, it's like, you did your chores, now here's $500 in $1 bills, you know, that, 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 like, wow, this is really good. Well, that's secondary, because you've been conditioned to become excited to those big stack of bills. That's the distinction there. So, you know, there's, there are some differences there, but just make sure you understand the difference between the two there, okay? All right, so. Oh, boy, here we go, all the schedules of reinforcement. You know, I think I'm gonna suggest to five of them that we have a way of pre-registering questions, because this would be a very good way to set this up. Because there, these visuals will make it really helpful as I explain it. Okay, so, notice I was talking about with positive reinforcement, negative reinforcement, I was talking about a two-step process? Okay. Now. The, when it comes to fixed ratio, variable ratio, variable interval, fixed interval, variable interval. It's again, a two-step process, all right? So we're sticking to reinforcement here, okay? Can I apply to punishment, yes, but we're sticking to reinforcement, that's what they do here, that's what they're gonna do in the AP exam, if it appears. So, the first question you have to ask. Is. The reinforcement. Is the reinforcement predictable? In other words, can I predict exactly when the next reinforcement will occur? Do I know exactly when the next reinforcement will occur? For example. Do I know exactly when payday will be? Do I know exactly when the next payday will be? Yes, let's say I get paid every two weeks, I know exactly when the next payday will be. It's predictable, I know it. Now, forget about weather reports and meteorology, forget about that for a moment. Do I know exactly when the next snowstorm will occur? I do not know when the next snowstorm will occur, okay? If I play the lottery, do I know exactly when I will win money? What do you think, if I play the lottery, if I buy a lottery ticket? Nope, I will not know, I mean, if I keep playing, you know, to infinity, I will eventually win, but I don't know exactly when. Anybody here play Fortnite? My kids are obsessed with Fortnite. The reason why I mentioned Fortnite is, okay, this, it's a stupid game, I don't get it. But the point is that you go and you'll, some part of it is Minecraft, well. I'd say a little less so with Minecraft, I'll stick to Fortnite here, because it's an interesting example, where you go up these little chests, and maybe you'll find like these, these. It's easier for it to explain, Minecraft makes even less sense to me, I have to say. But you open up these chests, and you might find a really big special weapon, okay? When you're playing video games like that, where you're looking for stuff, do you know exactly when? Do you typically, typically know exactly when the next big prize might be? The answer is no, okay? So, again, I'm really talking about things here where, like, do you know? When you'll get your next email? Do you know, yeah, forget about like planned emails, like, you know, the decision comes at 12 noon. You don't know exactly when you'll get your next email, okay? So, and the reason why I'm going through this is I wanna make sure that we really. We really understand the difference between something predictable versus not predictable. The, when you, when it's, something is predictable, when you know exactly when it's going to occur. We call it fixed, it's predictable. Whereas if you can't predict it exactly, it's variable, it's variable. I know some textbooks like to say it's consistent versus random, that's not really true. It's much better, much more accurate to say. Fixed, I'm sorry, fixed being predictable, and variable being not predictable. So, given that, okay, let's put that aside for a moment, okay? When you get your paycheck. Is the paycheck based, and by the way, sometimes like if Skinner were here, he might object to some of these examples, but still, they're gonna work for our purposes. When you get your paycheck, is that based upon number of behaviors that you perform, or an amount of time that goes by? Is it based upon behavior or time? Time, okay? Is waiting for. The laundry to be done, the, let's say you put clothes in the dryer, is that based on time or behaviors? Time yet again. If I go to a slot machine, and I keep pulling the little lever, which today they don't even have levers anymore, it's buttons. But, you know, if I keep playing the slot machines, will my victory be based upon the number of times I play, or the amount of time that goes by? Behaviors or time? The correct answer is behaviors, and here's why. Because, you know, if I stand in front of that jack, if I stand in front of that slot machine. You know, the slot machine's programmed to pay out after a certain number, yeah, I know, it's, it's not a great example. For college students, it's a little easier, because they go into casinos, but, you know. If it was based on time, then, you know, I could just wait all day, and, you know, eventually the machine will start paying out, right? It's based upon behaviors, if I play the lottery, okay? The lottery is not going to track how many, if I've been playing for seven days or 20 days. It, it basically, you know, probability is based upon the number of times I play the lottery, right? In other words, if I wanted to increase my chances to win, if I wanna win, I gotta keep playing, it's based upon behaviors. Let's put it this way, let me give you another, let me give you a more feasible example here. Getting enough points to get a good grade, is that based upon behaviors, number of behaviors you perform, or time? I have behavior, I agree, disagree with that, as well as some other people chime in. Okay, yeah, so, getting good, you know, it's like, you know, it'd be stupid, it's like, well, I wait 12 hours, I'll get extra credit. No, you have to do something for it, right, it's based upon behaviors. Getting a new email, is that based upon, yeah, I wish to, so, you know. Getting a new email, is that based, like, is that gonna be affected by the amount of time that goes by, or the number of times you check your email? Getting a new email, is that based upon time that goes by, or the number of times you check your email? Let's put it this way. What do you think, is it based upon time that goes by, or the number of times you check your email? Well, think of it this way, does that mean if I check my email 50 times, it makes it more likely? Let's put it this way, if I take out my phone, okay? Open up email, close it, open up email, close it, open up email, close it, open up email, close it. Does that make it? Make it more likely I'm gonna get? Of course not, right? So is it based upon time that goes by? It is based upon time that goes by, in other words. In other words, like me checking, not checking, you know, that's not going to do anything, you know. It's based upon time, right? Getting a text message, does making, does keep checking your phone make messages come to your phone more often? Like unlock, 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 is that going to make phone, you know, of course not. It's based on time, right? Anybody here surf? I give the example here because it just shows it's not based on behaviors, it's based on time. Is anybody here go surfing? Well, okay, even, let's say a person surfs. They want to have, like, get a really good wave to surf because, you know, there are good waves, not so good waves. What? Do you think the good wave, getting that good wave will be based upon the amount of time that you wait or the number of times you jump in the water? What do you think? Time, yep, time. So it comes down to this, you know, and this is where, and like I said, the visuals make this a lot easier. The. If it's, if the reinforcement is based upon you doing something a certain number of times, like you have to do something, you have to perform the behavior a certain amount of times, then it's going to be ratio. If however, a certain amount of time has to go by, provided you're doing the behavior, that makes it interval. So I turn, you know, I put the clothes in the dryer and I hit start, I wait 30 minutes approximately, clothes are done, that's time. If I buy 10 coffees at Starbucks, I get a free cup of coffee. That's based upon behaviors. Ratio is based upon the number of behaviors you perform. So for example, if Starbucks gives me a free coffee after buying 10 times, if I make 10 purchases, that's ratio. If Starbucks gives me a free coffee once a week because I'm just a swell guy, that's going to be interval, okay? So, that's where it kind of gets a little confusing. Is it based upon number of behaviors you perform or the amount of time that goes by? So now, let's put things together. Fixed interval, that means after a predictable amount of time that goes by, reinforcement will occur. Paycheck is the typical example. A fixed interval, because it's based on time. Skinner, for purposes that go beyond this, didn't really like the example, but for our purposes, it works. Fixed interval, after a certain amount of time, predictable amount of time, after two weeks, I get my paycheck, provided I show, I show up to work, obviously. Fixed ratio based upon them behaviors. Did anybody do magazine sales when they were in middle school or something like that as a fundraiser? They sell magazine subscriptions? They'd better do that when they were in middle school. Yeah. Actually, so I'll give you an example. So if you sold 10 magazines, you get a free something, right? There's all sorts of, if you made a certain number of sales, after 12 sales, you get a $2 bonus for your school. Anybody here go to, ever been to Chuck E. Cheese? So, after getting 50 tickets, after earning 50 tickets, you get the eraser. You spent all that money, you got an eraser. But after getting a certain number of, you know, tickets, you get a prize, right? Yeah, an eraser was, it was too expensive, they didn't need 5,000 tickets. But the point was, in that case, you knew exactly how many tickets you had to earn in order to get the reinforcement. That makes it fixed ratio, fixed ratio. The paycheck for our purposes, fixed interval, you had a predictable amount of time had to go by. So, now, what about snow? If I, you know, keep looking out the window, if I keep just looking out the window, will that make it snow more often or does that make it more likely to snow if I just keep looking out the window? Clearly not. So it's based on time, which makes it interval. And can I predict when it's going to snow next? Exactly when? Oh, I can't. So therefore, that makes it variable interval. That makes it a variable interval schedule. Then, variable interval, I'm sorry, variable ratio. Gambling is the prototypical example of, of the, the variable ratio schedule. I'm just trying to think of a more practical example that might work for you. Because it just, you know, gambling, it's just, it's. You know how sometimes like, let's see, surprise ice cream sundae? Well, it depends upon why you got the surprise ice cream sundae. Actually, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. Let's say you show up to your favorite ice cream parlor, okay? I call it ice cream parlor, I'm sure, I'm sure in different parts of the country they might call it something slightly different, but ice cream shop. I call it ice cream parlor. You show up at the ice cream parlor and every time you walk in, you get to pick a slip out. And sometimes it will say nothing and sometimes it will say sundae, okay? If it says sundae, you win. That's going to be variable ratio because it's based upon the number of times you go into the shop and you can't predict it, that's variable ratio. Yeah, so that, you know, it's, you know, is it based upon the number of behaviors that you perform? The slot machine is another example, or I'll give you the lottery ticket because I have to keep buying in order to get a winner, right? I don't know if I have to buy, you know, five tickets, 15 tickets, 2,000 tickets, two tickets for me to win the next time. It's unpredictable and it's based upon me making purchases. That makes it variable ratio. So again, it's a two-step process. First, can you predict exactly when the next reinforcement will occur? If the answer is yes, fixed. If the answer is no, variable. Is it, then the second question, is it based upon the number of behaviors you perform or the amount of time that goes by, provided the behavior is being done? If it's based upon number of behaviors, that makes it ratio. If it's based upon time that goes by, provided you're doing it, interval. I will tell you one little thing here, and put this in the chat because this can throw people off. If they use that phrase on average, I doubt they will need FRQ, watch, it'll show up now. If they use that phrase on average, on average equals. Actually, let me just retype it here, on average. I hope I've explained it, like I said, it makes it, if they say on average, it's going to be a variable schedule. And it throws people off all the time. Why is it variable? Good question. Let me ask you this, folks, how often, and answer this in the chat, on average, how often do you get a new email? On average? You good? Okay. So, let me go with Sasha's example. You get, Sasha gets an email on average every two minutes, okay? Does that mean Sasha, that you will get an email exactly every second minute? Does that mean that two minutes exactly goes by exactly for you to get the new email? No, it's on average. Sometimes it's three minutes, sometimes it's 30 seconds, sometimes it's, you know, five minutes, sometimes it's a minute and a half. But on average, it's two minutes. You see how it's not predictable, exactly predictable? It's like, eh, about every two minutes, but I don't know exactly when it's going to occur next. Yep, that's why it's variable and, you know, they, that can throw people off. You know, it's like saying, you know, it snows on average once every three weeks, depending upon where you are. That's variable because you don't know exactly when the next snowstorm will occur. So, okay? So, yeah, that's, that's the distinction there. So, we're at the, no problem, I hope that helps. So, pre-Mac principle, I'm going to say that real quickly, a question about the pre-Mac principle. I don't think it's going to be the AP exam, it's going to really throw people off. But here it is in a nutshell. The pre-Mac principle is when a more favorable behavior tends to reinforce less favorable behaviors. So in other words, it's kind of like saying, hey, if you clean your room, you can go play the piano. So in other words, to really oversimplify it to the point where it gets horribly incorrect when you get to more advanced applications of it, it's almost like reinforcing a behavior with a behavior. And for AP, that's probably going to work. So. So it can't be fixed when you need to find the average because the average, I'm going to say, I'm saying. Yeah, that's one way of looking at it. I mean, average can't be fixed because unless it's like every second minute, but that, which would make it the thing on average. But, you know, when we say on average, it was usually variability, so. Yerkes-Dotson Law is actually in the motivation and emotion unit. So I would, I'm not, I'm not avoiding, I'm just saying, wait till that unit to address it, so. Because that takes some explanation, so. There are topics most tested in the FRQs in past year four and five. That analysis has been done, I'm sure, I know it's been done, but I don't have those numbers in front of me. Closer to the AP exam, maybe we will have those. But it's not a very good practice to find the ones that have been tested most and just slay those because they're known to find obscure things on purpose, to kind of, you know, throw people off, so. But, you know, one of the ones that your teachers emphasize most, those ones that we get tripped up on, those are good, good places to start. The major vocabulary is good places to start. So, alright. So with that, we're at our hour now. I hope to see you at the cram tonight, where we'll do unit three, that'll be tonight, which is sensation and perception, and I look forward to seeing you there. Obviously, questions, you know, submit them to Fivable on the website, their social media. Do whatever it is you need to, and hopefully we'll, I'll make a suggestion right now. So, yeah, I'm still a little behind on doing the, I've only gotten, I think, responses to the unit one prompt. So I think this weekend, I meant to do it last weekend and I am behind a little bit and I want to get caught up on that. I do get them as soon as someone submits them, there really hasn't been enough, so. Are the Fivable study resources enough? Well, I mean, I think it depends on what you're going to use from Fivable. I mean, you come to the sessions, you ask the questions, you take, you know, I think there's a lot on Fivable that will help you. I mean, it's a question, like, I couldn't, you know, it's, it's based upon what you know. It's based upon, how much, is it more about relearning stuff, it's about practicing? So, I mean, it's more of a matter of what do I know and what can I, what am I getting from this? I think that's, that's a matter of what you have to do, so. So, yeah, I think it depends upon, you know, how much you know this stuff already and what you're looking for, so. Yeah, and, yeah, that part-time limit will probably. Also respond, yeah, I'm a little behind, but I do have some catching up to do with that, so to give feedback on some things. But, yeah, if you do submit them, I do give feedback, that is part of the, what we do here, so. It might not be, it might, it might be more on like specific parts of it or aspects of it, but I do give feedback, so. Okay, so I hope to see you for the cram tonight, should be interesting, I hope. And it's going to be unit three. If you have questions for that, make sure you have those ready. And I am literally sending a message to Fivable and get this, see if we can have like a pre-registered question for Q and A set up, so. With that, folks, have a great day and hope to see you soon. Take care.